This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the March 12, 2024 Coopville Town Council meeting. Please join me for the plenary. I'm Gladly Leedis, through the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, on a nation undergone invisible liberty and justice. We are without Pat Powell today. Could I get a motion to excuse?
I'll move to excuse.
If you can't hear me, I'm sorry. We are without Pat Powell today. Could I get a motion to excuse her from the meeting?
I'm going to excuse Councilmember Pat Powell from the meeting. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
She is excused. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Oh, no, we have to approve the agenda. The agenda is it approved as submitted? Any change in? You two?
Okay.
Do I have to have a vote?
Yep.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then approved. And now the minutes? Any changes to the minutes?
The move approval is submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
There is no mayor's report. Our mayor is not here today. We'll go to audience input. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the council about subjects of concern or interest or items not already set for public hearing. Input requiring more lengthy comment is best submitted in writing. Do we have any public comment? Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Seitz, and I'm a resident of Coopville and the Chair of Muscle Fest 2024. So I'm here just to say thank you to the town of Coopville from the beginning to the end of helping us really put on a great festival. I know, you know, I started working with Chris Jolly early on and just all the people that make this thing happen. I just really appreciate every, the planning group, the police group, the public works. Really can't say enough about Public Works. And I don't know if Jesse was glad that I had his phone number or not. Just super helpful. And I appreciate the town also took time to review some special requests that we had for this year. And it made the world of difference for us in executing Muscle Fest 2024. I also have had so many people ask me, why don't we have it in April or May? So I just kind of want to make a statement about that. The reason Muscle Fest was created is for really the economy. It's the, it's like, I call it the finale of winter. It's been slower for the, for all of our shops. And it's just a great time to celebrate and show the endurance of Pacific Northwesters. And that, you know, the mussels are great during that time. And it's just a really nice kickoff to all the festivals. And I want to thank everybody who came out and stood the hail on Saturday, which forced everybody into the shops, thereby checked off that success of Muscle Fest 2024. I also today just received the acknowledgement that I have been approved the reservation of the rec hall for 2025. So mark your calendars for March 7, 8, and 9, the first whole weekend of March of 2025. So thank you so much to everybody, especially the town, for just really making it a great event. Really appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you for all the hard work. Do you know how many people attended?
That is a, that is a number one question that we never know the answer to. I also, just really on behalf of the Coopville Historic Waterfront Association and the Muscle Fest Committee is who I'm representing today. You know, we sold 1,100 chowder tasting tickets in probably about 30 hours. The mingle tickets were gone in about 24 hours. So the first February of the month, first Friday of February, is when those tickets go on sale. And this year, we had a limited number for sale on Saturday and Sunday mornings, which was popular. But you should never count on that. So we really recommend people get online. Everything that we ticketed was, well, the boat tours did not sell out. So of course, it was cold. So there was definitely the weather factor, but I, I just, it was, it was a great turnout. And so that, because we don't have a ticket for every single person, we'll never know. We always say 5,000 to 7,000 people that visit our town. And certainly, the parking lot was full all the time. We know there's a lot of people here. And I did create a bus from Vancouver, British Columbia with 55 people onboard.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions about that, Muscle Fest?
I'd just like to compliment the Muscle Fest crew on the way they did. And it's really nice to see all the people from town volunteer to help. Because that really made it nice, and people really enjoyed it. And I think the cold weather didn't bother anybody that much because it was pretty crowded both through the time down there. So I think you guys did a great job.
Absolutely. And I would totally be remiss to not mention all the volunteers because really, without people doing all the volunteer work, we really can't have any festivals. And that's true for all the festivals in the world. So I recommend volunteering. It's super fun. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Kelly.
Yeah, could I just make a comment? Any couple of things? First, Chris, we make sure Public Works gets that thank you from them. And I heard from a number of people that were there, just the comments about Public Works and law enforcement, how wonderful they want to work with. So I appreciate that. And as far as in March, what that's called is the shoulder season.
Shoulder season.
Yeah. And it's, it's purposely done then because it is a time when there's not much else going on. So changing it would sort of defeat that whole purpose. Yeah, and it is the shoulder, so it's the shoulder season and the, and sort of the beginning of spring. So, and I can remember a few years ago, I know there was hail, but I can remember a few years ago volunteering snowing. So it is take what you get. So thank you, Bill.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other public comments at this time? And Chris, we didn't have anybody online. One person?
They cannot make themselves a thing, call it.
Okay. I see one person online. Were you wanting to speak during, open to the public?
Doesn't look like it.
Doesn't look like it, okay.
No.
We will move on to our first item of business. And that is appointing two new members to the Planning Commission. Two new volunteers. Do you want me to do that?
Sure, I can talk to a little bit. So the mayor usually puts together the appointment for Planning Commission and other boards. This year, we have two people resigning at the end of March, and three people had applied to take their places. So we had a good problem of having more people than spots. And so the mayor recommended two that are in the staff, staff board and packet. And we're, from the Planning Commission's work upcoming is going to be working on our comprehensive plan and some other big projects. So they're sure going to get their, get their time in.
Get their feet in.
Yeah.
So Susan Upchurch, who is a longtime Coopville resident. And then Evan Henrick, who is a relatively new resident.
And he's here, chilling, nothing about.
Oh.
There in the audience.
Susan is also here.
Oh. So. Very exciting.
Very exciting.
Mayor, I've moved to appoint Susan Upchurch and Evan Henrick to the Planning Commission with both the four-year terms ending on March 31st. Since 2024, that must mean 2028.
Yeah, 2028.
So seconded, no? That change?
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, guys, for your service.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Susan Upchurch and Evan Henrick to the Planning Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you for supporting us.
Yeah, sure do.
Okay, the next item that we have is approval of Resolution 24-2. Let me go to that. And Josh, you want me to cover this one?
Yes, I have no idea what this is.
This is a resolution that is going to add our, let's see. It's going to enable the mayor and the clerk treasurer to make contributions and withdrawals for the LGIP. Did everybody have a chance to review that? Are there any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24-02 designating the mayor as authorized individual of the town's LGIP and authorizing the mayor and the clerk treasurer to make contributions or withdrawals of the town monies in the LGIP. Second.
I had a quick question for you, Mike, before we voted on this, or just a comment. I did note in the language that all of those contributions, withdrawals, et cetera, all come to the town first. So any, anything that's noted here for the withdrawals or contributions, they still come here first?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, to vote, okay. So we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item that we have is to ratify the adopted 2045 Island County Population Projection. And Josh is going to walk us through that.
Yes, okay. So Joshua Inglebry, Associate Planner, the town Coopville. This item is talking about our, the countywide 2045 population projection as sort of the first step in our comp plan process and in sort of the countywide planning process. And I'll, I have a few slides to just sort of talk about that framework. If I can get it to work. Okay. So to take a step back from comp plan at a local level, right? The Growth Management Act is what sort of the state-level guidance, regulations, rules for comprehensive planning, or how you plan for growth and investment in communities. And that is sort of the top of a pyramid of regulations that get passed down to the local level, right? So that is what the state passes down to the regions. And in our case, we have countywide Island County, Coopville, O'Harbor, Langley, planning group that handles our regional framework. How we work together with those different jurisdictions on things that aren't contained by Coopville's municipal lands, right? So that's population, that is urban growth areas, other sort of regional issues that come up, right? So that's that regional framework, that collaborative, collaborative framework that then informs our local comprehensive plan and our goals, visions, priorities within Coopville itself, right? And eventually, those tie into our development regulations and how we actually affect change through those regulations that are informed by those policies, right? And so population and land use are sort of the centerpieces of planning and comprehensive planning. And that starts in the countywide planning policies and starts with this population projection, right? So the Office of Financial Management provides a high, medium, and low projection for all of the counties across Washington. They give us the choice to pick the most appropriate range within the bounds. And our countywide planning group, which also includes a liaison from the Navy, we work to investigate and evaluate is what needs to be updated in our countywide planning policies? And then what is the appropriate population projection to select, right? And so our policies speak to the median projection, the center of the road is the default and what we should be, we should be selecting unless there is telltale compelling evidence to suggest otherwise, right? And that comes in in terms of if we knew the Navy was expecting some sort of change either up or down, or we are expecting, you know, large-scale sort of statewide or region-wide changes in industry, right? Which we're not at this point. And so the countywide planning group is responsible for making that recommendation. It goes before the Board of County Commissioners as the sort of host jurisdiction, right? Because they're, the unincorporated area encapsulates the rest of us. It's their document that they take responsibility for, their staff is dedicated to it. And then as the decision-makers, they adopt it. And then as the partner jurisdictions, we ratify that adoption, right? And it becomes effective when the majority of jurisdictions have ratified it, right? So we're one of four jurisdictions to partner on and be collaborators with this population projection. And so this population projection was recommended to be the middle, the medium projection. And that was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners in December of last year. And that graph is, this is what it looks like. That's too small. I can make some changes to this. So the median projection is 102,639 people on the horizon of 2045. That's 20 years. That winds up being about 14,000 people for 724 per year, right? So that's for all of Island County. We have right now a current population of 88,000. And the, and so this range that they give us is sort of all encompassing, right? It dips well below our current population with the low, and then much more than is feasible at the high, right? So median projection seems to be the most appropriate for now and will serve as sort of that stepping stone and that starting point for our comprehensive land processes. Well, that's all I have. If you need the motion on the screen, here it is. And I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Any questions?
I have a question, Josh. I know this is just a projection, I could say. And I'm fine with picking the median one. And I think Coopville has things pretty much under control based on our comp plan that we just recently did. But I would be concerned about transportation and water. Because we are an island, and with that many more people, I just wondered about water. Because with sea level rise and with saltwater intrusion and stuff, throughout the whole island, not necessarily the towns per se. But I'm hoping that they do consideration, you know, take consideration into those issues. Because transportation is only one too-lane highway all the way through the island. And I can't imagine how long it would take to get off the island if we ran over 100,000 people living here. So anyway, I'm just, I know that probably when it gets down to the nitty-gritty, they'll have to take that into consideration. Because I don't know that the county's done a study on water or not. But that's going to be an issue, I think, down the line with the plume's moving around and people drilling all over the place. So anyway.
Yeah, no, it's definitely, that's been a big conversation as part of the Board of County Commissioners and their comprehensive plan process. And that's, I don't know, yeah, I know that there is, you know, interest in more comprehensive water studies and that type of thing. But yeah, it's definitely, that's like, that's the meat of a comprehensive plan, right? That's what we figure out, what we need to do if it makes sense to, right? If this 102,639 is feasible, right? Whether or not it's a projection, right? That's all part of what we're doing, right? And so I do have a last sort of slide, right? Just to sort of reassure you a little bit. This is, the black line is our population, actual population from 2010 up until now. And then a little bit sort of made up in between 2025 and 2036. We're, we've done this before, right? These sort of triangle wedges are those high and low projections with the, with a selective projection for in 2017 and then our 102,639 for 2045. And we're, right, the adage is all models are wrong, but some are useful, right? We are most likely never going to hit 102,000 before we have an opportunity to reassess, right? 2036, or 2035 is our next mandated comprehensive plan update past this one, right? That's halfway through that projected timeline. And by then, we'll have another set of population projections, another set of metrics. So we have sort of, the, the goal is always to be iterative in, in trying to figure out and best tune how we plan, right? Long stretches of time to plan are not necessarily the most useful because lots of things can change, right? In 2017, we projected that our population projection would be just under 88,000. We are 15 years early to that population projection now, right? And so that's all to say, right? There's, there'll be multiple steps before we get to that large number. And we'll see what needs to be made, or what investments, what changes, what policies need to be made to mitigate or to enhance, or however we, you know, decide to move forward.
Any other questions?
Okay. I would move to approve Resolution Number 24-02, designating the mayor as the authorized individual of the town's LGIP and authorizing, oh, I'm sorry. All good. Just that's right. Okay. I move to ratify the adopted 2045 Island County Population Projection of 102,639. Sorry.
Second.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously?
Have the other municipalities passed it? I know you said Island County did.
Island County has, Langley and O'Harbor have it on the, it's upcoming. So in the next few meeting cycles. So I think by the end of April is when they're expecting to hold those meetings.
So the next item we have on the agenda, Coopville was awarded a grant by the Department of Ecology. Josh, you can walk us through that one?
Yeah, I can walk you through that. So last year, we had our sea level rise form in the assessment. That was, I don't have a presentation for this, we're trying to figure out what happened. But I did, I made a nice map. That's just my background. It's, yeah.
I was going to say, that's kind of fancy.
Yes. So Department of Ecology gave us a grant last year to study the impacts of sea level rise and flood recession. We had a really nice packet and report done by that, basically saying that we have a lot of historic buildings, a lot of infrastructure, our wastewater treatment plant, all of those things sort of tied to the shoreline.
You need to change it because Rick's trying to find his house. I can see him looking over there. Like, he and I are both trying to find our house.
Lesson learned. I'll put a more boring background. There we go. There, no more houses. So they, they had given us a, a grant to figure out what is vulnerable. And figured out what was vulnerable, and now we have a grant to figure out what we want to do about it, right? So we have $96,900 to conduct a coastal adaptation strategy, which is really designed to be a follow-up phase two to that project and identify action strategies, you know, costs associated with whatever we decide to do in terms of values, right? That could take a number of forms, and I'm not entirely sure what it will turn out to be. But the goal is to have, you know, robust public input and sort of whatever, you know, buy-in we need to, with those property owners, with those folks who are impacted to figure out what, you know, is most feasible, most, you know, sustainable for the town, right? So that, this is the grant that gives us that money. We expect to hire another, go out to bid for a consultant as soon as tomorrow. I can tell the paper that we're, you know, post that notice then. Hopefully by April, the second meeting of, meeting of April, we'll have a consultant onboard to kick that off. And that will come back to you like these two, the other two contracts in here. Yeah, so that's, that's about all I have for that, answering questions.
You say ideally come back to the town in April, meaning they will, that the RFP will be decided, okay.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So yeah, the plan is for the RFP to run from March 16th to April 8th, with then a quick turnaround to interview and select, and then have that contract ready to go after that.
You think it'll be hard to find somebody? Are there lots of companies out there doing this kind of work?
There's, there's a lot of folks who are interested in this work and a lot of interest in following up on our study that we did last time, right? So I don't anticipate that it will be hard to find people. And there's plenty, like, there are entire industries that are coastal engineering, right? And coastal adaptation that live in the Puget Sound region, so.
Any other comments?
I move to approve and to authorize the mayor, or the mayor pro-am is maybe appropriate, to sign a grand contract with the Department of Ecology for $96,900 to conduct the Coopville Coastal Adaptation Strategy.
I second that. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we will move on to the.
Number five.
Trying to find it in the, is that one of yours?
It is one of my, okay. You're just starting.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is what happens when I do some jobs.
Yeah, okay. So this is to, this is a discussion about the contract with Atwell Group for housing regulation development. Josh is going to walk, walk us through that.
Yes, so last month, I think at the beginning of February, we put out an RFP for middle housing code amendment updates, right? So the Department of Commerce gave us $35,000 to bring our development regulations to development standards in line with a recent House Bill 1110, which talks about middle housing and accessory, or middle housing specifically, right? How we can build in that type of housing and those forms of housing into our, into our development regulations, right? So this is a goal that was set out in our previous comprehensive plan to work to potentially address our cottage housing ordinance and other ways to improve that affordability. And with the, with the end goal being affordability, right? So we went out to bid, we received one proposal from Atwell Group, and they had a strong proposal. And we didn't feel like the fact that they were the only one to submit wasn't reason enough to go back out to bid, right? That we feel like they're competent to do the work. And so we got $35,000 from the Department of Commerce. We're kicking in $5,000 from our budget that is usually set aside to code regulations. That sort of is in a more of this line item that, that way we can discuss and work in those middle housing standards that are coming down from the state, as well as tie in accessory dwelling unit revisions and in code updates to hopefully make that a little bit more clear and a little bit easier for, for folks to, who want to pursue those types of, of housing styles. And so this project is about a year long. This, this commerce grant goes till June 2025. And so we'll have a year-long process with some public input, with meetings from, with the Planning Commission, eventually to town council for adoption of these sort of development regulations, right? What's interesting about this grant is that House Bill 1110 doesn't apply to Coopville as a mandate, right? There's like above 25,000 folks, there is a mandate to implement these, the like state-guided changes. Since we are below that threshold, we have sort of a lot more flexibility in designing it to fit within our community and to, you know, take advantage of this money that Commerce is granting us. But be able to tie it into our, our local, you know, what needs to happen in terms of design guidelines and other types of limitations that we have here.
For a year-long project, does this budget, do you anticipate the budget covering all of it?
Yeah, I, I think so. It's the, I don't think I, maybe it is. We have a scope of work that was pulled directly from our grant with Commerce to become the scope of work for our consultants. And so they have everything lasting up until, oh, maybe it's only, I guess our scope ends January 2025. So I guess, that might be a typo, actually. Okay.
Yeah, that was another question. That was the duration. Because I did look at the SW, but I wasn't sure. Yeah, that was another question, that was the duration, because I did look at the SW, but I wasn't sure.
Interesting. This might be, I'll have to double check. I was under the impression that, I have so many grants that are all sort of coming to end at the middle of the year, I'd rather assume. I think, yeah, January twenty-twenty-five, so not a year, so instead eight months, ten months, so a little bit shorter timeframe. But will be kicking up hopefully in the next couple of weeks, and we'll have it wrapped up by the end of January next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what's in the SW is correct?
I, I think so, yes.
So Josh, um, is this where ADUs fall in? Is that considered middle housing?
Yes and no, right, like, I think practically accessory dwelling units are middle housing in that they occupy that same sort of price range and affordability level. Technically, the state does not count accessory dwelling units as middle housing. Middle housing is a specific term for duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and those things, right? Like, so they're sort of parallel tracks of middle housing. It doesn't encompass it from like a state definition, but fits within sort of the affordability and intent of what middle housing wants to achieve. And, and so part of this, right, the thirty-five thousand dollars specifically wants to address middle housing. There are two bills, one for middle housing, one for accessory dwelling units, that have been implemented. And so that five thousand dollars from us helps us tie in some of those accessory dwelling units into the scope of work so that we can address both without having to sort of cross grant money streams, so we can report the correct amount to, we can report the correct deliverables to Department of Commerce.
Does it matter if, um, units are rented or are owned, does that have any issues with that?
I, they're not in terms of what our code regulations would, would try to address, right? I mean, that's certainly an interesting question, and at some point, it'd be a useful discussion to have, how we feel about renting ownership, that all the sorts of things that go into how affordability works. But for this grant and for the scope of this project, they're not, it doesn't matter.
Any other questions?
I would move to authorize the mayor to sign an professional services contract with Atwell Group for forty thousand dollars to conduct and update to the town's middle housing development regulations.
Sorry.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Asks unanimously. Okay, next, we have the DCG Watershed. On that here.
With the comprehensive plan, yeah.
Yeah. And I'll hold, turn it over to Josh again. It's just great.
Yeah, sorry.
Don't have anything to do.
So, uh, in case you didn't know, we're redoing our comprehensive plan. Our, so our twenty-twenty-three plan that was just adopted really was a, a catch-up or an update to our twenty-sixteen project plan. We were very late in getting it started and, you know, for a number of reasons. But because the Grove Management Act and the Washington State Legislature made some amendments in the last couple of years, and then realigned all of the different areas of the state to be on the same timeline. So now, uh, like Oak Harbor, Island County, Cooper, Langley are all doing their comprehensive plan, due in twenty-twenty-five. And then we're all aligned going forward to the future. So we, because of all those changes, Department of Commerce has kicked out a bunch of money just as formula grants to, uh, basically everyone who does comprehensive planning. And we are, were eligible, were awarded a hundred thousand dollars to do that work. And so we had a RFP go out through the month of February. We had Atwell and DCG, uh, submit their, they submitted proposals, and we reviewed and ultimately selected DCG to, to do that work. And so they're, uh, they're a local firm that we've worked with before in the past and has familiarity with Cooper and with the island. And so they are highly competent and professional, and we're gonna be, have, I think, a very solid turnout and product in twenty-twenty-five when we finish up this comprehensive plan. And so we had a hundred thousand dollars from the Department of Commerce. The scope of work for this contract is ninety thousand. We are, uh, we have already signed a contract for, with the EV's Landing National Formal Preserve staff to update our historic preservation EV's design guidelines, and they're getting ten thousand dollars of this grant. So that's how the numbers all work out. But yeah, so that's, that's them, and have any answering questions?
I saw the termination clause with ten days, were you good with that, Mike?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services contract with DCG Watershed for ninety thousand dollars to conduct the town Cooper's periodic comprehensive plan update. Sorry.
Any other comments or questions before we vote? All in, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Asks unanimously. Josh, Josh. All right, the next item that we have is the, um, Ordinance seven-ninety-two, amending the tree canopy regulations. And once again, that is our friend Joshua Engelbrink, Associate Planner.
Associate Planner, how do we go? Okay, so this one, this one will be a little bit longer. This is a, an actual sort of project that we've been working on for a while. This is our tree canopy regulations. This, so some background on this to catch everyone up to speed. We originally envisioned this section of code in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, when it was adopted as an urgency, urgency ordinance. Basically, someone had done something, and we realized we didn't have the rules to regulate it. And so we spent six months developing that, and that's Ordinance six-eight-eight, which gives us the goal of thirty percent tree canopy coverage, right? So that was, uh, thirteen years ago at this point. In that time, it has achieved mixed results. There has been a lot of people who have brought up to Owen, and then to Donna, and then to Jesse, the issues with this, uh, the way that this ordinance was structured, right? And so Donna had initiated this project, and we had initiated, we had done quite a lot of workshops with the planning commission. And all of that was intended to, uh, address the difficulty that small parcels under half an acre were being burned with a large amount of trees that they would be required to plant if they were to develop a site, right? So that was sort of the impetus for this project, and that had happened off and on since twenty-twenty-two, going into twenty-twenty-three, and then twenty-twenty-four is where we are today. We had had our public hearing with the planning commission in February, and at that meeting, we had some, uh, there were some agency comments and some public comments that were included in the staff report and packet from the Department of Fish and Wildlife and from a couple of members of, of the town. And so those are all, that's sort of all led us to here, where we are, to sort of, uh, look at the final draft of this and, and hopefully move it forward or, or kick it back, depending on what, what questions I don't answer correctly. And so the existing tree density methodology was basically a division problem. You had an existing lot size minus a set fifteen-hundred, uh, fifteen-hundred square foot reduction that was divided by two hundred, and that gave you tree credits. Depending on the size of the tree, depending on how the tree was preserved or not from the existing site, gave you a range of point-two-five to sixteen tree credits, right? And so for ease, a, a lot of our, our examples talk about large trees, right? And so sixty-seven tree credits need thirty-four large trees to be planted. This was a proposal that came in, uh, off of Parker Road. It has a building, a driveway, an access easement, and a reserve field, and I would like to try to plant thirty-four trees in the space that can accommodate it, right? So this is, this highlights the rules as needing to be fixed, right? There are, there's simply not enough space to accommodate this. And if they were to plant thirty-four large trees, they would be unhealthy, they would not be effective tree canopy, they would not be effective trees, and they would likely pose any number of risks as they grew or matured, right? So that was sort of the, that was the, the problem that this tree code revision is trying to solve, right? And so when Jesse had come to the town, he had took, taken this on and reworked some of the, the math to be a little bit more favorable for, uh, for those smaller lots. And instead of trying to tinker with the math of how do we keep tree credits, but make it so it's more effective for small lots, he thought that the, the most appropriate path forward was to switch to a tree canopy method rather than a tree density, right? So instead of a number of trees that have been planted, but we are instead trying to, uh, we're requiring a certain square footage of canopy area, basically how much of a parcel is shaded, right? And so that methodology comes at a total size of the parcel minus the incompatible areas. So areas that are a building, or a driveway, or things that, you know, would not facilitate having a tree over them, that's our incompatible area. And then we take, depending on the zone, anywhere from thirty to fifteen, or in the case of municipal and civic parcels, uh, not having a minimum percent coverage, right? So you take that plantable area, you take thirty percent of that in the case of medium-density residential, and that's how much square footage you have to, you would be required to, uh, plant for and shade, right? And then that, depending on the type of tree, would depend, would influence how many trees would actually be planted, right? So moving away from one tree is X amount of credits to a tree that we know or we can estimate has a canopy of, or a crown of so many square foot, that's how that lines up, right? So in this case, right, we have a fifteen-thousand square foot parcel minus all of those incompatible areas. You get a plantable area of just over six thousand square feet, thirty percent of that is eighteen-hundred square feet. That winds up being four to nine trees, depending on how those, how large the crown of those trees are, right? And so, which in this case is much more feasible for, for the, the property owner who's trying to build a house, right? So that's, that's the core of what this, uh, what this code amendment is trying to do, is, is reduce that burden on, on folks who are trying to, to develop or build a, a lot. And so with that, we, there's a, a number of, uh, slides that I'll go through that are just sort of the key highlights on, on the areas of that are being amended, right? So we, uh, we have updated a lot of definitions, right, to facilitate what we mean when we say the coverage, significant trees, et cetera, et cetera. Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife offered up a, a few more definitions. So we included wildlife SNAP, what, what it means to be a professional, a qualified professional arborist, what it means to be, to have a hazard tree, right, to better inform how we make those decisions. We clarified a lot of the, the uncertainty around who needs a, a clearing permit or what is maintenance versus what is true removal, clarifying that, you know, in our case, right, non-native vegetation is part of our rural landscape. Fortunes, head rows, windbreaks, those types of things may not be native to the area, but have cultural significance. And we want to make sure that that's acknowledged, not just because native trees are important, but we have these other, uh, planted and, and ornamental landscaping features that, that may be of value in certain contexts, right? And so, and then Department of Fish and Wildlife offered us that we should be aligning this code section with our, our critical areas and no net loss of ecological function care, uh, requirements and considerations. This is basically the technical work of how we go from a tree canopy, or how we go from a tree density to a tree canopy methodology, including, right, what it means for, uh, that's management practices, and then significant trees and heritage trees. That's a program that we sort of have on the books, but is not being used currently, that I'll, I'll talk about in a little, in a, a nus, another slide. And then talking about establishing a fee and lieu type program, or how we would go about assessing or, uh, finding that a fee and lieu situation was appropriate. And the last sort of big update for this tree canopy approach is that we wanted to focus on parking areas and paved areas as a, as a particularly important piece of climate resilience and, and ensuring that when larger, in this case, ten or more parking stalls are provided, that they're shade, they're shade-along pedestrian pathways. And so that code section manifests as parking lots should have a fifty percent canopy coverage compared to the remainders of the sites that are, you know, either thirty percent or twenty percent, or, or a lesser percentage overall, right? And I'll, I'll go through an example of how that works. And so that's the core of the policy and the core of the ordinance. The other things about this, uh, project, I guess, that can put it into context a little bit better, right, is that it's supposed to be a mandate, right? This is an identified problem that we have what we think is a solution that will address those issues, right? It's not a, a revision or an increase in a tree program, right? So there's a lot of limitations that are included in terms of, right? For this to be effective in the long run, we usually would need some sort of, uh, methodology for actually assessing tree canopy coverage, whether that's light or data or other sorts of surveys that could say, in these areas, we actually do have thirty percent tree canopy coverage, or we would like to, this area to be twenty percent, right? We don't have that because we don't have the staff time, or usually the, the data at, that's available at state levels is not of a high enough quality for our local, uh, small jurisdiction, right? So we don't have that type of access to do that analysis, right? So with money, with time, we could do that and move forward and build a better program, but that's really not the intent of what this is trying to accomplish, right? We have, uh, two other aspects, right, heritage tree programs, which is essentially a, a register of trees that are culturally or ecologically significant, that people would like to volunteer to be retained, right, provide a little bit extra protection to those trees in case someone, you know, in case the property changes hands and they want to protect that tree, right? That is something that we have on the books and sort of manifests through the historic preservation, uh, code sections. But we don't have any trees, no one has volunteered to pursue that program, right? So there's a missing opportunity for us to build into that program, you know, more incentives to preserve trees. It hasn't been popular, right? And so that's something that should be looked at again in the future, but we don't have sort of the desire, or people don't seem to have the desire to implement that or volunteer for that. And then the other is our fee and lieu program, right? So in order for a fee and lieu program to be effective, it usually needs a revolving continuous supply of funds and dedicated areas that are, uh, targeted to meet those needs, right? An area that could be useful for tree planting or other, uh, that, not just for trees, but for other programs. Usually there's a dedicated place where that money is directed to. And our level of growth and development really does not facilitate a large theme program, right? So it's, it's possible and we can make those, you know, small investments in, in specific areas, but it's really hard to have a robust program without that sort of constantly circulating funds, right? So all of those sort of tie into this, this development ordinance saying that we are really trying to fix a problem and then there are other things that should be considered as we move forward to really develop if, if we want to prioritize tree canopy and street trees and other sorts of vegetation programs. That's something that will require a lot more time and effort and direction. And so I have a few examples, but this is the general process, right? You have the lot size, building size, parking, other incompatible areas. All of those things will be subtracted from lot size to give you the percent coverage. And then an applicant, either at the subdivision phase or a building phase, whenever they're, they're developing, would submit a landscaping plan showing what trees they're wanting to plant, what canopy they would cover. And that's how we implement this, this new code section, right? And so an example, right, is from the new residential zone. You have an eleven thousand square foot lot with a building, a driveway, and then a little accessory structure. Thirty percent of the remaining area is about eighteen hundred square feet. A landscaping plan shows six trees that meet that nineteen hundred square foot requirement, right? So that's a very site-specific way to, to show that this parcel has met that, that requirement. In our current code, this same parcel would need twenty-four large trees, right? So good luck, I guess. But, so that's, that's really the, the point of this is to demonstrate that we're reducing the burden on, on property owners and developers to, to, to a much more reasonable standard, right? And so on a small lot, right, this is a five thousand square foot lot with a seven hundred and fifty square foot building footprint. They would need three trees to meet that nine hundred square foot canopy coverage. And our current code would say triple that. And then finally, right, in the terms of a commercial zone, right, we have a thirty-three thousand square foot lot with a driveway or with a parking area and a nine thousand square foot building. The way that this works for commercial buildings and for parking structures is that the parking lot is taken out of the entire incompatible area, right? So building footprint minus parking lot gives you three thousand square feet of that twenty percent canopy coverage requirement, right? That's about ten trees at three hundred square feet. Then, in addition to that, you have just the parking area at fifty percent of tree canopy coverage of the pedestrian walkways and, and other shading areas. And so you have four thousand square feet of that space to be covered and, and shaded. So all in all, you have about seventy, seventy-five hundred square feet of required space, which would, would more target the, the parking areas and the areas of incompatible surfaces. And they would have that, knowing that going forward to design, you know, appropriate tree wells or, you know, install root barriers and other types of, of tools, I guess, to, to ensure that there's compatibility between what's being planted and then what's, what the parking surface is, right? And so in the same, in our current code, right, our, that threshold that is automatically reduced, right? In residential places, it's fifteen hundred square feet. In commercial and areas that are utilizing parking lots, they take the parking out of that equation, right? So it's a thirty-three thousand square foot lot with eighty-eight hundred square feet removed, which gives you sixty-two large trees that need to fit on this site, right? And so this requirement to plant and shade the, the paved surfaces sort of shifts the, the focus away from using the paved surfaces as a, as a bank to reduce how many trees you'd have to plant because it, the more you, the more area that you pave, the less trees you'd have to plant because it reduces that tree credit requirement, right? So that's the basics of the ordinance updates. And I'm going to answer a few questions. And here's the recommendation, should you need it?
Well, it just seems to make sense. I mean, some of the, well, as we're fighting now, it seemed to be impossible. I mean, just why couldn't you do it? Though this just seems to make sense.
Yeah, and I think, right, the, the perception, right, and like, it is reducing the amount of trees that need to be planted, right? So it is having that effect. I think that where this, and that can be lost in a lot of, when there's not a lot of context on what's happening on the ground, right? We are advocating for reducing that barrier. But in reality, in what sort of Donna and Jesse and my experience has been is that property owners would come to the table, to the permitting department and say like, we can't meet this, we're not going to do it. And then we are, then our decision is, okay, do we require you to do this? And does that mean planting trees and then digging them up? Does it mean you don't actually get to build your house, right? So it's, the goal is to bring our requirements more aligned with what people are actually comfortable and able to accomplish on their, their properties.
So Joshua, this speaks to, and the model that you showed us was based on new construction. What about existing properties? Can people look at the new, the new, right, reg and go, I can start cutting down trees because I have more than is required?
So that's...
I'm sorry if it's a silly question.
No, no, no.
It just popped into my head.
It's not a silly question at all. And it's actually, so something that I sort of skipped over a little bit, right? We have more or less a loophole for that already, right? The top bullet is that trees, the code section says that for properties that are half acre or less, you don't need a clearing and grading permit to clear trees, right? And it becomes very hard for us to say, this tree needs to stay, this tree like is important, right? There was a lot of ability to take advantage of that once a property is built, landscaping becomes what the homeowner wants. And if that means cutting down all the trees, it gets into an administratively gray area on when we say no, right? And so this, closing that and associating, basically saying like, we have a process for identifying clearing and grading through the certificate of appropriateness process. We have guidelines that speak to how we should protect and preserve specific types of vegetation and what specific neighborhoods are, like what their context is, right? We have a little bit more clarity on what needs to happen, right? So basically, someone who wanted to, who wants to do tree removal now can go through the certificate of appropriateness process, that's a hundred dollars. And if it's a reasonable thing, then that's no issue. If it becomes a larger conversation, then we can have that one, larger conversation in sort of a more administratively robust process. And then for people who are wanting to develop their properties further, right, the threshold for compliance with our new tree canopy code is fifty percent, right? So if you're doing a small addition, that doesn't come to play. If you're doing a big remodel and a, an extension ADU and you hit, you know, whatever, like the, the threshold size for fifty percent, then you're coming, then you're needing to address whether you're retaining trees, planting trees, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. I'm not cutting down any of my trees. You know I love these trees.
I have a couple of questions. A couple of questions, Josh, is one of them that always gets everybody's attention. Is there a height limit on trees in residential areas?
Huh, I don't think so. Right? So townwide, there's a twenty-eight foot height limit. And I guess I have not read the code as closely to see if that stipulates buildings or if that includes vegetation. I would assume it doesn't.
I'm just thinking about residential, you know, where somebody plants a leland cypress and running your house and heck, it grows six feet a year wide and high. But anyway, I was just curious if there were kind of limits in residential. And the other question I had is there, do we have an, do we have an exemption for solar? A lot of times for stalls that have, what do you call them, parking stalls, you know, where they, sometimes they just make them open that they have covering over the top of them. And a lot of times they want to put a lot of, like schools and stuff, put solar panels on them. So looking at our plan that we have with X amount of trees in a commercial area for over ten places, I would think we'd want an exemption if they were going to have covered parking. So they plan on putting solar panels on.
Yeah, I mean, I, that is not built into this code. And I think that that's a very, like, that makes sense to include that. We, we have not had a lot of interest in that from local school district and everything. But like, but if that was something that someone gave to us and said like, we see that you have tree canopy requirements, but we would like to put solar panels, that's a conversation that we're much more, like, that's something that falls within like our ability to be flexible.
And also on the solar thing, people, a lot of, I noticed there's a lot of houses around town that are commercial, that are putting solar panels on their roofs. And if there's a big tree in the area, they, they take it down so that it shades their solar. So I think we need to, if we don't have it already, we need to have some kind of exemptions for solar, for removing a tree if you're going to put solar panels. I don't know which paths up here are pointing to a point. So I don't know if solar panels take precedence over a, a, a large tree that's been there for a long time that we would like to have in the town. So I don't know if there's a, a happy medium in that area.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that that probably ties closely to the heritage tree program, right? If, if we do feel strongly or if a property owner feels strong, excuse me, or if a property owner feels strongly that a tree should remain, right, then we have avenues to try to address that and build those protections. But I think that we're, right, other than this certificate of appropriateness process and going through our guidelines to ensure that tree removal is done in a way that is aligned, right, I don't think that there's, we don't have anything specifically to say, right? Solar panels take precedence, tree takes precedence at certain thresholds. I think for that, that doesn't exist in our code as, as written, but I think that that's well within our flexibility to sort of examine and try to accommodate as best we can.
I didn't, I didn't mean to have extra work in the guidelines. I was just, you know, down the line to work.
No, yeah, it's definitely, I imagine that as we, as sort of Washington State spends a lot of money to incentivize solar panels and renewable energy, it will be something that becomes flushed out at some point in the future.
I think you guys did a really good job on it. So pretty, pretty comprehensive, right? Hopefully, you know, I think what we needed, you know, there for a long time. Hopefully, that'll be good for a while. Appreciate all your work.
Yeah, in, in ten years, I'll give you an update on it.
I had the impression that this, this is one of those ordinances we're going to keep an eye on this time, those perhaps more than, more than the, the usual ordinance.
That's, that's the goal.
I like the approach very much. And then back until I started going through this, I didn't realize how sort of unrealistic the present system is.
Yeah, no, I definitely think, right, like, we, this isn't, this ordinance and these development regulations are never not going to, they're always going to have people who want to see it changed and will have issues. And making this change now will give us sort of a, a baseline for how we move forward and identify other changes that need to be made. Maybe this, like, maybe we tweaked it in the one direction and we make those changes as needed, right? It's, yeah, I, I think that it will be one to keep an eye on and...
I was going to move to a that ordinance, number seven ninety-two, amending the development regulations relating to tree canopy, canopy in section sixteen point two zero of the hotel code.
Second.
Any other questions or comments before we go? All in favor of amending the tree canopy regulations, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post.
I mean, aye.
Passes unanimously.
Good work. Gosh, well done.
Really well done.
I think we all realize you've had a lot to do these days. We really appreciate your hard work and all.
Thank you. More, more to come.
Yeah.
Our next agenda item is approval of the February payroll and AP transactions. And I will hand it over to Mr. Rick Walton.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the February twenty twenty-four payroll transactions for a total of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents and the February twenty twenty-four accounts payable transactions and checks, number one zero two nine zero to number one zero three one nine and PFT payments as attached for a total of forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
It has been moved and second to any other questions, comments? Moved and seconded to approve the February payroll and AP transactions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose. It passes. Thank you, Mr. Walton, as always. Stack reports. Everybody have a chance to take a look, any questions?
I have questions, but I've just, on yours, Josh, just seems like a lot, a lot busier than usual or? You seem a bit more than some reports, but I think that...
Yeah, I, it was definitely, February was more busy than January. I don't have a good time sense of if it was more busy than usual, right? So, but a lot of them were smaller projects or fairly straightforward projects, right? So they're not super time-consuming in terms of dedicated, you know, time, but...
Logan, thank you.
It's busy, busy. Yeah, and then the only thing I noticed is that we didn't have one from Bo. I don't think we did last month either, so I'd like to look at this, the numbers, please, please.
We have a lot of...
I think so too.
Yeah.
Has he been on vacation or something? Because he's usually so good at it.
Yeah. No, I haven't, we haven't seen him this week.
Okay. If he's on vacation.
Council reports, Mr. Walton.
Yes. The utility advisory committee met on February twenty-nine. And we have several issues, our items that we discussed. One of them was just kind of a maintenance or finish it up kind of thing. The old water line at the Camp Casey has been recorded as a gift donation to the folks there, so we don't have to maintain it. So that's all of our, all of our scope now. The SAP, Sanling Analysis Plan, which is a water review requirement, which is required, will be done every eighteen months. That's what they're going to basically do now. And that's as a new water plan. The FEMA stormwater repair of the lift station pumps and culverts, excuse me, controls, surround preserving repair are all repaired, which is required for the closeout for our reimbursement. That's all finished finally, that's our agenda. The Parker Road sewer extension will be done in-house when the weather is approved prior. But hopefully they're, we're trying to start that in May. And that's a four hundred foot sewer extension that they're doing on Parker Road. In the sewer, the study was reviewed by the State Department of Ecology. We have a graph for a nutrient reduction program. And that's, I'm giving a word, I'm skipping the syllable. And Joe is also working on scope of work or vision builds with the study. with study and sharing or discharge water use. And RFP request proposal is just, sorry, don't. So that's my report. Any questions?
The Law and Justice Council did meet on 28th of February and when we discussed a lot of business, they kind of just wanted to get a couple of the highlights. Sheriff, of course, is still staff critical, but he has at least seven new, where it's critical is on the patrol personnel shortage of personnel there. But seven new patrol are in the process. And this is a fairly lengthy process, you know, getting certified so what they need, excuse me, before they can be hired as patrol officers. But when it comes to the jail, it's now 100% staff. First time since I can remember. So they filled all the vacancies there. And in the process of doing a jail needs assessment, RFP, just a heads up on that, at some point, probably later this year or early next year, the county is going to, basically the sheriff's department, is going to be going to the county and asking for bond issue, the Purdue Jail, County Jail. So that's kind of, that's, that's probably what I wanted to hit on.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I just wanted to mention that Rick and Mike and I and Molly attended the open house at the new fire station on Race Road on Saturday. It was a very nice, very nice ceremony, very well attended. I heard later that there was close to 200 people there. It was a lot of people, and we got a tour of it after the ceremony. And it's really, really an amazing, amazing building. But we were very glad it was inside and not outside because it was, yeah.
Pretty bad, wasn't it?
Yeah. As far as tourism goes, I think we're really settling down. As I mentioned before, we've been working on doing the new interlocal, which is between the county and the three municipalities. The committee has finished that. And we're going to be meeting with attorneys for the county to just look it over and then it will come to the three councils and the commissioners. And hopefully, once that's done, we can just kind of pre-do all these changes we've got to make. One thing you will start receiving at some point is we're doing a weekly newsletter about what's going on in tourism, what is in the coming. And that's going to be coming individually to all the council people in all three municipalities and the county commissioners. So be looking for that. Otherwise, yeah, things are finally pretty smooth with that organization.
We've been working, working, working. The only thing I have is just a reminder about the community surplus vehicle program that Island Transit's got, four vehicles. Molly asked a question during the last meeting on whether or not any of the vehicles had a wheelchair lift and none of them do this go round. So I need to make sure that I tell her that. But Chris, maybe when you, we can put the www.islandtransit.org somewhere on our minutes or something, just because there's a link in there to the application process. And I know that they're going to fairly soon close the application process, but they're also doing by reservation. You can go and like look at the vehicles that are available. But those are for the nonprofits. So I just want to make sure that I mentioned that again. But then, that's all I've got. Any other discussion? Any other items?
Great job.
Good job.
Hearing none, I will adjourn us.
Sorry you didn't break the record.
Josh is all, Josh is watching.